Ready?
Ready.
All right, good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the July 14th, 2025 Regular City Commission Meeting, starting at 6 o'clock. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to approval of the agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I support.
Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, we will now move along to public comment. This is for items that are on the consent agenda or items that are not on our agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, just state your name and address.
Hi, my name is...
I'm trying out.
There it is, okay. My name is Jame Fesdige. I live down at 516 Lyons Park Drive. I emailed you all a bunch of pictures this morning. Did you get them?
Yes.
Great. I was hoping you could put them up here, but if you didn't, I brought this along just in case, if you need visual aids.
Pulling them up.
She's going to bring them up? Great, fantastic. Anyway, I'm here to discuss the fact that we really would like to have lines drawn for parking spaces on Lyons Park Drive. I know often the argument is, well, if we do it there, we have to do it everywhere. But Lyons Park Drive is a very, very different situation. It's heavily, heavily trafficked, and we need to have some guidance because, as you can see from the pictures, people are just selfish. They're careless, and they just don't follow the rules. So if you give them lines, we've seen, and my wife and I have given them a little bit of guidance because we took the liberty of drawing our own parking spaces. So if you could show the one that says "Good Parker," or whatever it is.
There you go.
That's a bad Parker. You can see right there that someone is sort of away from the curb, but not just that. They're away from, they're not leaving adequate space for another car. They just park randomly in the middle of a space that's good for four cars. So we can move on to a different picture.
Sorry, I got to switch it every time.
Hey, that's a good picture. Yes, everyone, everyone was seated in the right place. So here you can see that that's for four cars, but without lines, you could see the third car there is really boxed in. To try to get out of that parking space, they just try to get as much room as they can, and they don't really leave adequate room. Whereas if you had the lines there to guide them, it would be a better job.
This is the, this is my...
Here you can see someone is overlapping someone's driveway because, again, they try to squeeze in every inch that they could find. So this is a problem that we all have because there's more driveways on our side of the street, and so it's often a big problem. Here again, you could see this guy's parked in the middle of what would appear to be four spaces. They just, there's no guidance for them. They just park where they think it's okay. There you could see are the lines that my wife and I drew, which we were accused of vandalism by the city. That doesn't look like vandalism to me. That looks like public service. That guided people to show where they need to park. Here is someone parked on the sidewalk between the entrance and the exit of the parking lot at Elm Street on the corner.
Zoom in, they do have a ticket.
I'm sure that they have a ticket. I'm sure they deserve the ticket. And so once again, you see, they leave these big gaps. They don't pull up next to a car without some guidance where they need to put their car. It creates a problem, and then they start blocking driveways. And so that's, we would really like that to be done across Lyons Park Drive.
Thank you.
That would be terrific. Also, I'd like to get on the agenda next time to talk about speed limits, which I mentioned last time, because that's a real problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, other public comments?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Mary Goff, and I'm a former mayor and commissioner for 31 years and lifelong city resident for 85, 84. I would like to express some concerns about the new development on plan for Lake Boulevard. A little background about development in St. Joe. For my 31 years on the commission and those before me, there have been many, many plans for development on our Lake Boulevard properties. These properties are probably the most prime properties along Lake Michigan in the state. It was never a problem having plans presented. It was a matter of what fit the character of our city. Great care was used when developing below the bluff. The Fountain and Carousel properties have had many plans to have high-rise condos, hotels, and high-end homes, but the landowners wanted to protect the properties to enable the public to enjoy them. They could have realized millions, but instead graciously worked with the city to develop our jewel below the bluff. The master plan gave great care to things like parking requirements and height restriction. This plan as presented changes both of those. To think that the residents of the development will only have one car is unrealistic, and saying that there are 57 spaces for the public to use with no designation would lead me to believe the residents of the development would spill over into those. You are really turning 100 cars to find another place to park, as most residents do have two cars. The height is much higher than it was felt a project would fit in the character of the city. In the master plan, we encouraged building owners downtown to develop rooftop condos and apartments to bring in more tax base, and they have done so. Certainly, Ry Bells and the Buck have spent a great deal of investment in providing their eating options with a view. When we were doing the master plan, we even went to the bank building across City Hall, went up high in theirs, and looked over the city and took an inventory of what building height would be good for the city. 221 enjoys a nice eating upper area with a view. There are places where a development could go and utilize a parking structure, not on our best view lots, but good lots, good views. In the last block of State Street by the barber shop, the city has several lots that could utilize a development, even with a lake view. In fact, John Hodgson and I and others talked about a structure there that could have retail on the first floor, parking above, and we could have discussion with the Boulevard Hotel that could help their situation with parking by letting them have maybe the upper floor for their hotel residence and help pay for the maintenance. May I continue?
If you could please, we have three-minute limits for everybody. We have a three-minute limit for everybody, so if you could just please finish your comments.
The existing lots are more than just parking. They are in addition to supporting our community functions. This past weekend, they were used for handicap parking and for artists. When the car show will be held, many local residents will be able to park and enjoy our amenities and businesses downtown. The master plan talked about green space, and at one time, we talked with the Montes about their space becoming a pocket park. Perhaps some arrangement can be discussed with them so that they can be made whole in some way. Silver Beach was obtained from the Warren family with a donation and a purchase agreement. The other issue, as a commissioner, I ask our residents to allow the Harbor Shore development to continue and give up our tax base for the city of Benton Harbor. That is going to bring a great deal of tax base, and I believe it expires in Crisco. You can tell me next year or at the end of this year. I would like to have that price of how much tax base you're going to get for all the Harbor Shore development and the future development at the water, where the water tower is being taken down, because you're going to get a nice sum of money. And the people that I represented were willing to give up their money, I mean, to support the city still, knowing that they might not be here to enjoy the benefit of the new money.
Thank you.
The last study I saw for the city showed we have ample high-end condos for the city. The need is for affordable apartments similar to the hospital project and other projects on Red Arrow, which will attract the younger generation. Please don't destroy our charming downtown to fund projects that don't fit. Please don't sell us out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Steve Spielman. I live at 814 Lyons Park Drive. Five, six weeks ago, I was here and we talked about street cleaning. Still haven't seen the street cleaning yet. The sand has mounted up. Even across the street, there is growth of weeds on the non-parking side. You have an ordinance officer, don't you? Starting at Lyons Park and Park Drive, there's a pink commercial building. The weeds out there are like two feet high on the parkway. You go up the sidewalk, and there's like a little tree growing on the left side. I'm embarrassed for the city that nobody in your, works under you, sees this and cuts it down. Really, it's, I'm disappointed, and it's embarrassing. I mean, all the people now that you've routed, especially to come up Park Drive, it's sort of a joke. I mean, who's doing something here? I've mentioned it, as I said, five, six weeks ago. Is the machine broken? Can anybody answer that? Will you answer that or not?
It is not broken.
Okay, then why isn't it out? I mean, the sand that's even, again, in the alley behind there going to the beach, something's got to be done. I mean, okay, another thing, traffic pattern. When you're coming up to Lake Boulevard up Park, you turn right. Price Street has a big sign that says you can't turn left, okay? So you go to Jones Avenue, you turn left. I don't know if you've ever, I'd like for you all to try that sometime in traffic. Try getting into the lane to get onto Niles, you know, and then even turn left there. People are turning left in front of the mobile station. Nearly impossible. I saw the other day, somebody was so frustrated, they just hung a right, and who knows, they went somewhere and did a U-turn. You know, where is the traffic manager that is supposed to be doing something? You want to know their sore sight for eyes? All the pylons that sit on the corners of Price Street and also on the park side of Park Drive. I mean, they sit out there all week. Get a pickup truck, pick them up, bring them back out. It's pretty simple. I mean, it's really a sight for sore eyes, and if any of you go down there, you'd see it. It really is, it's bad. So I've got a few things within my three minutes. So sorry, I'll be, another thing is zoning and variances, things like that. Benton Harbor just passed zoning. Is it right or wrong? I don't know. But the city needs to get on a thing and reshape the zoning. To pay for, an example, $600 for a variance to ask for two feet and then get shut down, it's ridiculous. I mean, we have smaller lots that are 33 by 134, okay? I can't build a garage. I have to do, you know, there's a way to do it, but it's tightly compacted. Again, the house sits, you know, within that five feet, but it's grandfathered in. There should be a reason, there shouldn't be a reason that I have to start worrying about variances, and then if one of the neighbors doesn't like it, what do I do? Okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Good photos go along with this. I'll wait for her to pull the pictures up.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. My name is Siz Shalan. I am at the waterfront, 260 Water Street, Unit D. I'm also serving as president of the Silver Beach Carousel at 333 Broad Street, and that also is the home of the Curious Kids Discovery Zone and the Shadowland Ballroom. This is the beautiful bluff view that we used to see of Broad Street going down to Silver Beach. But our summer experience below the bluff this year is closer to the nightmare on Broad Street. When state law closed the carousel for 15 months during the pandemic, we lost $150,000. We were clawing our way back until the latest Broad Street traffic experiment. At the end of June, we were down 9% year-to-date compared to 2024, which is a projected loss of over $10,000 for our nonprofit. We should be having a breakout year, however, our numbers are down in July also. The confusion for the visitors starts at the top of water and State Streets. Having signs indicating Silver Beach Lot Full up all day is not only inaccurate, but people's heads look like they're on a swivel, trying to figure out which way to park and drive. Then below the bluff, you see these yellow and black signs, which may or may not be accurate, and then that causes great confusion when people turn the corner by the railroad tracks. The guy on the right wanted to make a U-turn, and the person on the middle was trying to load people, and that white car was unmanned the entire year from, or entire day. Now, this was, next one is a particularly classy look for Shadowland at the Silver Beach Center in June. The wedding couple for that Saturday, along with their friends and family, were just thrilled to come around the corner with this view, and then the big piles of sand blocking the view of the Compass Rose Fountain during the outdoor wedding. That's the view from Shadowland. Engaged couples may be potentially bypassing booking receptions at Shadowland because they expect more attractive surroundings. Even the view of the summer sunsets is now blocked by overgrown trees, signs, and park structures. The lane chaos means that some volunteers and staff exiting the Silver Beach Center must show this sign out their window in order to squeeze into the lane. The blue footprints painted on the sidewalks deliberately direct traffic away from the carousel. Pedestrians are being trained to bypass our building, going and coming from the beach, and when cars can't use the right-hand lane, impromptu timeouts for families and friends now take place on the street. Visitors can even stage their family reunions in the green space, complete with tents, chairs, and coolers. And, okay. The orange cones and the barricades make it look like a construction site, and the signs are just ugly.
Thank you. If you could please finish your comments.
Yep. Broad Street and the originally tided bluff-side development at present do not look like the wow development Dave Whitlam and the donors envisioned when they gave the $20 million valued donation to the city. The current description is more like, oh, no, what happened here?
Hi, Jer Chalito, 275 Bridgeway. I wasn't expecting to be up here, but I just want to thank you for your service and for everything that you do for the city, because you do a lot. But I do have to agree about that sand issue down there. It just looks very odd. But I'm here to talk about the Tuscornia Beach path. So you guys did a great job. You have that path in where the pier is going down to the beach, but it needs to be doubled because it's pointless. People aren't using it at all. I'm down there all the time. So they're really just using the stairs that are on the pier. So that really just needs to be doubled, and you'll have plenty of room to rake and do whatever you need to do.
The blue mat.
That blue mat, yes. And also, I ask every year, but I'm going to try one more time, it would be great if we could have some kind of a mat at the entrance of Tuscornia Beach so that people can easily get to the bathrooms, because it's a real struggle. I see strollers and older people like myself, no, that struggle to just get down to the beach because it's, there needs to be something firm underneath us, and that's where the bathrooms are. So it would be great if we could do something there as well. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Massa, and I live at 60 Lake Street, and I'd like to comment on the traffic pattern. I would like to note, is anyone here knowledgeable of the number of parking spaces at the Silver Beach Park? 400?
600.
600, okay. Well, if any of you would like to come down for a visit, I'd welcome you to sit on our deck and, at near sunset, especially on a Friday or Saturday, and watch the traffic go by. 600 cars, because they can no longer go up Broad Street. They are not allowed to go straight across and down Lyons Park Drive, which I'm sure more Lyons Park people appreciate, but they're all coming right past our area, which is a great degradation in living there. As well, along with that, now, because I know some used to go up Broad Street, maybe 30%, we still had 60%, and another 10 maybe went across, but there's a sign right at the exit of the park that says "Right Turn Only." There's no reason people couldn't go straight across and go down Lyons Park as well and share the traffic. The other thing is the behavior of the traffic people. Just before I came, and it's what cued me to come up for the meeting, I had forgotten about it, was that two crotch rockets went by at least 50 miles an hour, if not 60. It is just incredible, the unsafe conditions along Lake Street. That's all I got. Thanks.
Other public comment?
Bern Schwartz, 508 Lyons Park. I have heard this traffic problem for years, the backups, the delays, the new issues. It seemed, and I brought this up before, this problem can be solved with three lanes going from the Silver Beach Pizza to the park. One lane going strictly to the park, one lane going to the rest of, down below the bluff, and the third lane for returning. That would solve all of our problems. Anybody in the park can leave in multiple directions. Anybody going down would not get stuck because there's a private, a third lane to go into the rest of the, below the bluff. That problem can be solved. There's enough land to do it. I think you guys just need to step up and do that and solve this problem for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Well, I sent a couple pictures to Commissioner Sorolla, and he's seeing to it, but the thing I was wondering, you know, all that sand and rock and the stuff, weeds growing up down at Silver Beach, I don't understand how that's allowed. I don't know if it's the state or the county, but they demand, somebody demands that you put a silt fence up. You cannot have sand where it can go onto the road and fill up the drains, you know, plug up the drains. So that's one thing I'd like you to check out. I don't know whose responsibility or what it is, but it shouldn't look like that down there. And then the other thing is, there's still a broken stair on a main stairway that goes right beside the Whitcomb. That's been broke for years, and it's really quite a wide piece of broken concrete. And then I just noticed this week, actually, I knew the road was bad by Cafe Tosi, but there is a lip about this, about like this, where the sidewalk has sunk, and then it's got a curb. That, all that stuff is dangerous, you know? I mean, there's other places I'm not even mentioning, but those are pretty bad if you walk along there, and we just need to do a little more maintenance. And then I brought up the bridge where we walked for 17 years. My husband and I have complained, and it's always taken care of, but it's always a question. Well, we don't know if it's the county's or ours, but I mean, the weeds are 10-foot tall, you know? And one year, there was graffiti going on the wall. This is a main thoroughfare that comes from the newest section of the city of St. Joe, comes across the bridge. That's really important. It shouldn't look like an alley, you know, back alley.
Can you clarify which bridge you're talking about?
The main, our only bridge, our main bridge that opens up.
When you're going south on M-63, and you take the first right on the, was it Water?
Okay. But I don't blame you for not seeing it. You really have to be there on foot or bicycle. You can't see it from the car. That, I mean, you could if you were looking, but when you're there, you know, it's, yeah. And there was a lot of problems with curbs and stuff there, too, but my husband put some asphalt there so it wouldn't be so bad a few years ago. So anyway, it's, but the weeds, the weeds, that's just a big thorn. It's like, in the city, you can't have six inches of grass if you have a piece of property, but that thing can just be grown all to heck, right? You get me? You get me? All right.
Can we get your name and address, please, too, ma'am?
Cindy, will you?
Put your name and address on the record. Thank you.
I'm Cindy. Four Places on Upton Drive.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, other public comment?
Anne Barnes, 608 Marcus Street. Two things. I have a concern about a building in my neighborhood that is currently long-term rentals. It is asking to become all short-term rentals for nine units, so that's a big concern in our neighborhood. Second concern is the, thank you, Mayor Goff, that was awesome, the concern about the development and how it will affect the nature, the hometown feel, what people come here to see by such a big, big building. Something does need to be done over there, but I think that one needs to be looked at again, please. And again, my concern about underground parking because the bluff is not stable, and our buildings already shake above and below when a train goes by. So, thanks.
Any other public comment? All right, go ahead.
Dale Hagler, 466 Upton. I'd just like to say, if St. Joe is a quaint town, let's try to keep it that way, and maybe just this summer, stop all the parking, the one-way streets, the new putting sand on the sidewalk, put it back the way it was just for the summer and see how it does. It was fine before.
I'm Jack Sanderson, and I used to be the chairman of the Below the Bluff Neighborhood Association, but after hearing Mary Goff talk about the jewel, I believe I'm now the jeweler of the Below the Bluff Neighborhood Association. Anyway, a couple of things have been commented on and that I wanted to comment on. One is the sand on the streets down below the bluff. We have not seen the streets sweeping down there, and I don't know that either of them have been reported, but there have been two accidents that have been caused by sand. One was a motorcycle, motorcycle, the front wheel slipped out from underneath him, and he went over the handlebars, landed on his head, and apparently was damaged enough that he cut up and drove away. So another one was a bicycle, and basically the same thing happened to him. It is very, very dangerous. I'm a graduate of the Northwestern University School of Accident Reconstruction, and I can tell you that they say that sand on pavement or asphalt is almost as slippery as snow and ice. So it's, it's really a hazard. In addition to being on the streets, there's also difficulties with it being on the sidewalks that lead to the streets. So if you go to the Whorepole Field... So if you go to the Whirlpool Field down there and you walk the new diagonal to the northwest and you come out at Elm Street and Lake Street, you will find that on our side, the city side of that intersection, sand is piled up, at least in going across to the west, probably two or three inches deep most of the time. The county, on the other hand, incredibly blows theirs off and it's nice and clean over there. So it really makes us look bad by comparison. There is also the same situation at Lyons Beach on the sidewalk that crosses over to the Howard Trail. On the west side of that is three or four inches deep. And there's no reason for that. That needs to be done. That needs to be done. And that's your responsibility. It's not the homeowners. We always hear about the sidewalks, it's the homeowners. Well, there are no homeowners for that. There's the city of St. Joe. Other things that don't get done down there. This has been a horrendous year of preparation for the below the bluff area. And it, I can't see it's anybody's fault other than Public Works, and I don't like to name names, but it seems to me that that's responsible. We've had to have neighbors, or neighbors have called us that they've had to call multiple times to get trash containers emptied at the First Street and Second Street entrances to the beach and on Highland Street near First Street and at Second Street. Those trash containers were removed for the winter every year and they didn't come back until some of them after Memorial Day this year. So a little behind in things were getting done. On Second Street, we have a bicycle rack that was installed there and it was completely covered. You couldn't even see it. And some neighbors got together and went out and weed whacked around it. But that's not their responsibility. That's your responsibility. By the way, I'm not going to stop yet. The bike rack was promised for First Street and Lake Street intersections several years ago has never materialized along with several that were promised for Lyons Park itself. Other things we noticed, trees that have been downed in storms have taken weeks or months to get moved. And we have one right now on Second Street, that's Second Street entrance there. You'll see that there was one that was uprooted in a storm about a month ago. And nearby neighbors have called several times because it has fallen over and it's leaning against another tree. And sooner or later, the wind's going to get just right and it's going to fall over. And it's going to fall over and either land on a house or it's going to land on the cars that are out there. Or worse yet, it's going to land on somebody. Don't even think about it.
If you could please just wrap up your comments.
And speaking of trees, my neighbor talked about the tree that is growing out of the Park Street Bridge. And when that does, it makes a hole there, water gets into it and this winter it will crack up and we'll have to replace the concrete on it. That's simple maintenance. Doesn't take much to fix that. Also, one last thing, on Market and Bind Street on May 5th, a hole was dug in the middle of the intersection for doing some service work there. Now, two and a half months later, it's still a hole. It's been covered with some gravel, but that gravel has now been compacted. And this eight-foot square hole in the middle of the street from either way you go through there is now four to six inches deep. That needs to be fixed and it needs to be fixed two months ago at least. You know, the things are not getting done. One of my neighbors said, "Have you done something to really piss off the commission?" Because they're not doing anything down here to fix anything. And if I have, I apologize for it, but I'm going to keep doing it.
If you could please, sir, if we could please wrap this up.
I will. So the question is, who's responsible for all of this and who is going to be held accountable for not doing it? That is your job, commissioners, if the city manager doesn't do it. It's your job to see to it that it does get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name's Carol Michaels. I live on Veronica Drive and I have worked downtown St. Joe for over twenty-five years. Questions that I have to make sure there's good answers to about the development that you're looking at down on Broad and Lake Boulevard. Where is the access to the parking garage going to be? And I also agree that one spot per unit is ridiculous. Today, a Cisco truck blocked the alley for an hour and a half to make deliveries to the local restaurants. And we're talking about maybe adding two more restaurants, a hundred units, and that alley cannot support that. It's, that's, it's my understanding, Public Works, for safety, police and fire, those alleys need to stay open. And if the access is going to be on the backside of that building, it's, it's just never going to work. The increased deliveries, Amazon, UPS, FedEx, food service, if you're going to try and put a hundred units in the already most congested area of downtown, I don't see how that's going to work. And pedestrian traffic, you know, everyone comes up from the beach and that's where they walk. And if you're going to put all these extra people and vehicles and trucks there, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And that's, oh, recycling and trash, where would those be? Because if it's on the alley again, I mean, there's, there's just not room there for that kind of stuff. And as it is, the cardboard bin, which we've called about several times, gets full too soon and it needs to be emptied more often. So I can only imagine trying to put that structure there, it's going to be a problem. That's it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move along. We have an announcement. We have a guest here from the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Height, would you like to make your way to the front? We have Silver Beach Enforcement.
Good evening. Sheriff Chuck Height, I was at the last meeting talking about some of the issues at Silver Beach and some of the things we were looking to do to give our deputies some tools to take care of them. I am pleased to announce and thank you to our corporate counsel, Thaddeus Hackworth. Met with Jill Adams, the park director, myself. And you'd always see speedy government, but with last Thursday night, the Board of Commissioners approved an update to what we call Ordinance Eight. So for the public, it's on the website. You go to Board of Commissioners on the website and ordinances, ordinance number eight is up there. It'll be published in the Bering County Record this Thursday and then enforceable on Friday. So I can tell you that's about as fast as you're going to see government work. But I'm, I'm very thankful for that. It was, some of the issues we had were taken seriously and were put in the ordinance. So I'm going to give you just a little bit of a recap of what's in there. You're welcome to, like I said, it is online. A lot of it clarifies some violations as misdemeanors or civil infractions and outlines what those are. Clarifies what enforcement penalties and the fees for each of violations. Some of those fees did go up. And hopefully is a deterrent for some of the activity we've seen. Prohibits the holding and advertising for special events without the written permission of the Bering. I think Commissioner Sorolla mentioned some of the social media and some of the people that are, they'll put something out there even though it may not be happening just to try and get the reaction. Include information about marijuana prohibitions that were not in there because obviously this was updated last in 2017 before the legalization of marijuana. Clarifies that a person violating any terms of the ordinance may be immediately evicted from the facility. It adds a description and enforcement for violations of disturbing the peace and nuisance gatherings that was not as clear before. Outlines the process for trespassing someone from the park's property and prohibiting their presence in any county park for twelve months. The duties of the prosecution of this is now going to be the county prosecutor before it's corporate counsel. So I understand why our corporate counsel made that agreement with prosecutor, but that will help us as well. The other thing I would say is what it does is give us, some of this gives us the tools to deal with the situation as it. You know, a lot of times you've seen we've had to close the park before. Most people on the beach don't even know there was a problem. They're wondering, okay, why are we being, why are we leaving this nice, you know, sunset or just after the sunset? They had no idea there was even an issue. So this will give us some tools to be able to do that. And again, it'll go in effect on Friday after it's published in a countywide publication on Thursday. So any questions from that?
From the enforcement standpoint, has there been an increased presence over the last couple of weeks? I had heard something about state police having a bicycle unit down there. Is that something?
So we had asked them, I don't, they weren't able to, to my knowledge, unless they came and didn't know it. But we, you know, obviously over July 4th, we've always had increased presence with fireworks and everything else. As I mentioned earlier, with now having the two school resource officers assigned and also we've got, you know, one of the reserves that works quite a bit down there. So we've had some extra enforcement. I've been down there along with my chief deputy on the weekend of the 24th. So we are looking at making sure we've got, you know, good presence. I will tell you, I'm very pleased to tell you that since the last time and that one Sunday evening, we've not had an incident. And I'd remind the commission and the public that the number of hours and days that Silver Beach has been open and the three incidents we've had are usually at the very end of the park. One is too many, but Silver Beach is still a great place to visit, very, I was just down there before coming to this meeting. A great place to visit for families and we plan to keep it that way.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this information. Anything else from the commission? All right. Thank you for the update. All right, that moves us along to our consent agenda. That includes regular meeting minutes of Monday, June 23rd, 2025, Cleveland Avenue Resurfacing Project M.D. contract amendment, invoice and tax disbursements, board and commissioned vacancies. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
All right. Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
All right, item number nine under old business, we've got our downtown parking program update. Is that you, Emma?
That is me.
All righty.
Sorry. So caught up in public comments that I don't have my materials in front of me.
You need this?
No.
All right, I'm going to multitask. So this is a bit of a two-part agenda item, starting with an update that I'm going to read on behalf of the parking subgroup. City staff and I have spent the past month visiting downtown businesses, many of whom I see in the room today, tonight, and talking with owners and their employees about the parking program, including what works, what doesn't work, and the changes they'd like to see. We've also had conversations with many residents who have provided equally valuable feedback on the downtown parking program. As a result of this listening tour, the parking subgroup recommends the city extend the parking program pause through the year and take additional time to partner with businesses and residents on making thoughtful updates to the program before it relaunches next spring. In addition to continued community conversations around the parking program and potential changes, there will be more voices in downtown decisions. The Downtown Development Authority is currently interviewing candidates to fill one existing vacancy while considering expanding the board further. The DDA has been a tireless advocate for the downtown. I look forward to continuing to work with this critical group, additional downtown business owners and downtown residents to help us grow our sense of community and place downtown. Over the coming months, we'll continue our listening tour and incorporate additional businesses and resident voices into the downtown parking program design. We'll also use this time to focus on enhancing downtown attractions, including events, public programming, and other activities throughout the year that will draw residents and visitors downtown and encourage them to shop, dine, and stay a while. The parking subgroup is committed to rethinking the parking program, ensuring it both addresses downtown parking and congestion issues and is implemented in a way that enhances the downtown. By continuing our, by continuing our conversations and making thoughtful updates to the parking program, we aim to develop a system that will deliver all of the benefits we want for our local businesses in 2026 and beyond. So that is a statement from the parking subgroup that I wanted to start by sharing. I also wanted to share something that is far more in the weeds, which is an enhancement to what is now the pair lot right across the street from City Hall. We heard from a number of businesses that in changing the setup of the lots and the on-street parking, there was not enough short-term parking in that lot. Many of the, by design, many of the employees were parking here all day. And that's great and intended, but there weren't enough short-term spaces left for customers. And so we have gone ahead and added about twenty-six, actually, three-hour parking spaces in addition to the forty that were already there. And what we've got in the packet is an updated map that shows that change. And we're looking for a motion to sort of formally adopt that map change.
Thank you. Questions from the commission?
No.
No questions? Okay, great.
I move to modify the parking spaces in the pair lot to include an additional twenty-five three-hour spaces at the west end of the lot as identified in the map attached.
Support.
All right, any public comment on the matter? Okay, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much for that update. We will move on to item number ten, which is the map amendment, 230 Upton Drive, Harbor Shores Community Redevelopment LLC, Whirlpool Corporation rezoning I-2 Heavy Industrial to W. Water Recreation District. This is the second and final reading of the ordinance. Looking for Kristen.
I don't see Kristen. She may have stepped out. Maybe we can swap the agenda items and come back to her. Move on to the Eagle Scouts.
Okay.
They've been waiting very patiently.
All right, we will put a pause on number ten. We're going to move on to item number eleven, Eagle Scout Project, Milton Park.
Good evening. Tonight is Colin Peak is here. Colin is a life scout with Troops 26623 here in St. Joseph and he is, wishes to request permission to perform his Eagle Scout project by building and installing a little free library in Milton Park. Colin met with the Parks Board on June 19th at their regular meeting and requested permission. They recommend the city commission approve that, approve that request. So I'll turn it over to Colin and he'll tell you a little bit more about his project.
Great.
My name is Colin and for my Eagle Scout project, I'll be building a little free library. And so on their website, you can purchase the kit and like the post and I'll be putting it in Milton Park. And to raise money to buy it, my dad and I are collecting pop bottles from the FOP and anyone willing to donate, like family members making donations.
Great. What helped you decide to make this your project?
Well, Mr. Growhouse contacted my dad about it and I thought it was a really good idea to help give kids like free opportunities to get free library books. And at Milton Park, there's always kids there. So it's a great opportunity for them to get them.
Great.
That's a great location to do that.
Any questions from?
Make the donations.
We'll, we'll take public comment in a minute. What does, any questions from the commission?
No. Just, thanks for making Milton Park a little better. My kids love that one. So, thank you.
I was actually going to ask the same question. We love a free little library. Where could we make a donation if we wanted to donate some books for you?
Oh, donating books? I guess.
Perhaps Greg knows where to contact your dad?
Perfect. Great. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve Colin Peak's Eagle Scout project to build and install a little free library in Milton Park.
I support. Public comment?
Yes. Where can you take the cams to donate?
Oh, okay. So at First Congregational Church, there's like a shed area in like the back parking lot and you can just drop them off out there. We have our Boy Scout meetings out there, so I can collect them there.
Great. Any other public comment? Well, good luck to you. I guess we need to take roll. Abby, call the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All right, thank you and good luck on your project.
Thank you.
I think we have Kristen back in the room. If you want to come back, we're going to back up to item number ten. I already read that long paragraph, so we'll, we'll get right to it.
I'm going to do it twice.
This is a second reading of an ordinance from rezoning the property at 230 Upton from I-2 Heavy Industrial to Water Recreation District. The Planning Commission recommended approval of it unanimously during their meeting in June. And this is the second reading. It would become effective in ten days from now. I was on the phone talking to someone working on the development plan because we accepted the PUD application for today. So something is coming in the near future. The applicant is here if there's any questions. I know he has something else for this property later on on the agenda, so.
Thank you. And this is our second reading. We talked about it last time. Any additional thoughts, questions from the commission? Nothing? Okay.
I move to approve the second and final reading of an ordinance to approve zoning map amendment rezoning request by Harbor Shores Community Redevelopment LLC on behalf of the property owner, Whirlpool Corporation, for the property. of the property owner Whirlpool Corporation for the property known as 230 Upton Drive from the I-2 Heavy Industrial District to the W Water Recreation District based on the information included in the June 5th, 2025 Planning Commission Agenda Packet as the request meets the required standards under section 22.3 of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right. Any public comment on the matter? All right. Abby call the roll. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, skipping up to number 12, we've got Harbor Shores Parcel 2 Brownfield Modification.
So that was a smooth segue from one to the next since we reordered things. Chris Cook and Dan Fettie are here and I think can come up to answer any questions there are. But this is about making a change to the existing Marion County Brownfield TIF that is in place at Harbor Shores specifically for four parcels that make up what is being referred to as parcel two. And so this would be pulling them out of the existing brownfield at an earlier date than planned and sort of wrapping them up into a proposed new brownfield plan to allow this project to move forward. So Dan is truly the expert, and I suspect you have questions I can't answer, so he's here to support.
Well, I mean, that summarizes pretty quickly how we are intending to proceed with this project. You'll remember this has been going on for 21 years, this project has. In fact, I don't know if Mayor Goff is still here, but it was reminded that in July of 2004 is when we had our first meeting to start designing the Harbor Shores project. So it's been literally 21 years this month since it started. What Emily explained is that the parcels we're talking about, which is where the old water tower, those are currently in the Harbor Shores Brownfield Plan, and the activities that are planned for those parcels are in the plan itself right now. The challenge that we're facing is because the development of that site has been delayed for so long that we're starting to run out of time. There may not be enough time in the existing plan to reimburse all of the eligible costs that Chris and his team are going to undertake there. The roadways, the water sewer storm, site preparation, and some private infrastructure work as well. We have until, there's a little bit of a variance here, but we have until about 2041 before the plan would expire on those parcels. It may be enough time, but it may not be enough time, and we're trying to calculate what that would look like right now. So the proposal is, in order to provide some insurance on this, is to pull the plan or pull those parcels out of the plan and terminate the plan there and then create a new kind of ancillary or annex plan that will extend the timeframe a little bit longer so that the developer can be fully reimbursed for the costs. Additionally, the county and the city entered into an agreement last year regarding the expiration of the remaining TIF plan on the 425 parcels, and this was to account for an assessing difficulty that we had that amounted to some lost capture. We wanted to fulfill that capture. It was about additional $1 million that we needed to reimburse the city or the developer. So the agreement at the time is that we would, after the 425 agreement expires, we would continue to capture on those parcels through the 2026 tax cycle, at which point we'll terminate the plan entirely as to those parcels that come back to the city's tax role, which Mayor Goff was talking about earlier tonight. So in summary, what we're looking to do is to terminate the TIF plan, the existing developed 425 parcels after 2026, terminate the plan entirely on parcels one and two, and start a new plan on those parcels, literally this year, if we can get it done in time. If the city wants to move forward in that direction, we would actually start working on this. I think we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock to start discussing scoping out this project and seeing how quickly we can get it back before you. Okay?
What would be the end date of the new, the new plan?
Well, the legislation says that you can make a plan that goes up to 30 years. That's not going to be the case here based on the designs and the financial modeling that we've done. It could, as I said, it could probably be satisfied by 2040 or 41. The likelihood is, that's based on a relatively aggressive assumption about how quickly this gets built out. If there's any delay in that, we'd run into a problem. So I would, I would think that we'd be able to get the costs fully reimbursed by about 2020 or 2044 or 245, so just an additional few years. But that depends entirely on what the construction cost estimates come out at and the absorption of the project. Okay?
The changes are to the portions of just those parts of the parcel.
Right, that's right.
That's what I thought.
And to remind, I think it was in the letter that, that came out or the summary that Emily provided to you, if we do the new plan, our Brownfield Authority will draft it, send it to approval for the county board, but before it actually becomes final, it has to come back to the city for comment, concurrence, modification, whatever the case may be. So we will be back here in a couple of months with a new plan for you to review.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you need to see, do you see any potential ramifications or negative consequences that would come with changing this up?
No, actually, as I said, I think we could do it under the existing one, but I think we'd run out of time. Doing it under a new kind of annex plan, there's been changes in the Brownfield law, 2004, not surprising. And the new changes that came into effect a couple of years ago would actually allow for a more liberal application of the TIF. We're bound by the 2004 plan, which is fairly limited in what we can apply the revenues to. Under the new changes, we could actually apply it to a broader, broader band of activities. So we may actually be able to get more reimbursement of the process at a faster rate.
So this expands the opportunities.
Yeah, it doesn't create more money, so to speak. It just gives us a more liberal use of the money.
Perfect.
Interesting. Okay.
That's all my questions.
All right. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to support the request of Harbor Shores as presented and to issue the attached letter to the Marion County Commissioners and.
Support.
Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby call the roll. Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes. Thank you very much.
You.
We'll look forward to seeing you in a couple of months.
Yeah, soon.
Thank you for your support. We did actually submit a site plan today for the planning commission and speaking folks, so things are moving.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. All right, item number 13 on our agenda, Lake Boulevard banners.
In 2019, Carl Meyer, who is here tonight, requested permission to place banners along Lake Boulevard recognizing veterans and active-duty military personnel as well as police and fire personnel. After five successful years providing these banners, he's no longer receiving requests and would like to change it up some. So as such, this year, Mr. Meyer would like to install new banners as displayed in, in your packet. While this is somewhat inconsistent with the original banner approval, Mr. Meyer recently met with the DDA, and they're in support of using the banners for this year. The DDA does hope to work with Mr. Meyer on new banners for next year. So staff is requesting permission to place the banners purchased by Mr. Meyer along Lake Boulevard for the remainder of the 2025 summer season. As I said, if you have any questions, Carl is here tonight as well.
I just want to jump in quickly. We had a DDA meeting this morning where the minutes were approved that are included in the packet. One thing that didn't make it into the write-up is that the DDA supported all of the banners with the exception of the one that says "life is precious." There was concern that it could be perceived as political, especially with protesters regularly showing up at the farmer's market. And so that is in the minutes, but didn't make it into the write-up until more recently. So just wanted to clarify that.
Any questions on?
Just conveying what the decision of the DDA was.
No, no questions. Okay.
So it's just for this year, and then after this, they'll be correct?
Okay. Yes.
My only, my only question, and maybe this is something that we can revisit in the future, but is this something that truly needs commission approval, or is this something that we can explore having go-to city manager level approval in the future? This seems pretty straightforward of what's, you know, what signs to coordinate, you know, having city staff put up. I, I don't know that the city commission necessarily needs to weigh in on, on something like that.
I think that's a great idea. What I would suggest, and we talked about this a little bit with Carl when he came to the DDA meeting last month, is maybe coordinating going forward, get some of our marketing, you know, our colors, our branding, think about some standard messaging. And I think if we move towards something like that, it would be really easy to say, you know, as long as we're within sort of these parameters, if we decide to do something new, perhaps it's worth coming back and getting support. But I think if we sort of stay, you know, like Carl has done since 2019, he hasn't needed to come back, I think doing something like that going forward would be great.
Yeah, I think that would be, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but.
Makes sense to me.
Man, I think it's been viewed as essentially being their privately donated, given it's like the special event request. You gotta have permission from the commission for staff to put them up. If they were purchased by the city, like on Main Street, we just put them up, take them down. But when they, they're provided by outside, that's why the commission has been involved.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Explaining. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move to approve Mr. Meyer's request for the signs and drag staff accordingly. Is that enough?
Support.
Great. Any public comment on the matter?
I'm sorry. I'm going back to the "life is precious." Do you want to support all of the signs, or do you want to do it with the one removal?
And the write-up it was, okay.
I just want to make sure that we are clear so that we are all on the same page. I apologize.
Case supporting them all. So, I mean, I don't know what's objectionable about that, but, so I'd be in favor of supporting all the signs.
Was the, can we get clarity on the motion? Was that to accept it with the DDA's recommendation or not?
We'll.
Sure.
Yeah.
Life is precious. The first Congresswoman, the first black congressman, the first black woman to run for president, that was her son. Life is precious. Has nothing to do with.
Yeah, we, we understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll leave it to you guys. The, the language from the DDA meeting is on packet page 74, highlighted.
So I'll try. So I move to consider, I move to approve Mr. Meyer's request with the modifications recommended by the DDA.
Okay. I support. All right. Any public comment on the matter?
While I agree with a general statement that life is precious, unfortunately, it does have a very politicized context these days, particularly in light of the disruptor that's been protesting on the bluff, who is anti-abortion and anti-LGBT. So for the city and to use city resources to put such a statement up, I agree, is politicizing something that shouldn't be political. We shouldn't have to argue about whether that statement is going to put the city in a position to be making a political statement as if it represents everyone in the city. So it's unfortunate that that is a conversation that we have to have. And it's really, really unfortunate that that's a conversation that has come to our farmer's market of all things. But that is a conversation that we have to have now, and I am grateful for the edit and grateful for Commissioner Fernandez's reread of the proposal. So that is something that would be deeply important to me as a taxpayer. Sorry, my name is Kim Jorgensen-Gane. I live on Main Street. That is something that would be deeply important to me as a taxpayer in the city. If I were to drive by and see that banner up in my city, I would be calling all of you and asking for it to be taken down, quite frankly, because that's the moment that we're in. And I'm happy to give more context and would love the opportunity to do that, why that matters. But it matters deeply to me. It matters deeply to me that I can't go to the farmer's market without that in my face. So that would be in my face. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
W Johnson, 1919 Forest. I think it's very nice that the gentleman is spending his resources on the signs, and I don't agree with the edit, and I think maybe a consideration for the best thing to do is to have the flags be like our beautiful city logo or our beautiful United States flag and decide on something once and for all so that you don't have to have this conversation every time to change the flags, because I think the city has enough time trying to keep up with everything they need to do as far as maintenance of our parks and our streets and everything. And I really don't want my money going towards trying to decide designs of flags to display in the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Shaun, 801 Park Street. I'm just going to go on the record and say, "Life is precious. Doesn't matter who, what, when, or why." So I'm not afraid to say it out loud. I think it's kind of disgraceful that our city commission is making a big issue out of this. Just, all lives are precious. Life is precious. I think you made a mistake in doing that. It may cost you election this November. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
608 Market Street, Anne Barnes. Thank you, Carl. Life is precious. Life is very precious, and there shouldn't be anything political with it. Life is precious, and if St. Joe wants to say life is precious, and I'm sure there are a lot of people in here that do, and they have children or they don't have children, they have pets. This is a, life is precious. The seagulls that fly over our, our concerts, they're precious. The people that come to the concert last night, they're all precious, all their ages. Life is precious. Why can't we say that? And I am so sorry that it ups some people because they view it as political, but it's not. It's a statement, "Life is precious." I have fought for a grandson who was born under two pounds. Life is precious. I have raised animals, farm animals, and cried over them being gone. Life is precious. I enjoy the birds that sing in this town. Life is precious. I enjoy seeing people come to the art fair. Life is precious. We shouldn't be afraid to say it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Johnson, Forest Avenue. Life is precious. When I saw that sign, abortion was the last thing I thought of. I, in my mind, I just thought, well, yeah, life is precious. And then I started thinking about friends of mine in Benton Harbor that have signs, "Don't bring that gun with you," or "Think before you do something wrong." I put it on those lines of violence, whether gun violence or just physical violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, Abby call the roll. Commissioner Sorolla?
I support all the signs. It's not a yes or no. That's my position. That's what I want on the record.
Commission.
That's not a motion.
You do need to vote on the motion, though.
Yes or no?
Then I guess it's a no.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley? All right. Thank you, Greg. Moves us along to item number 14, resolution notice of intent to issue joint revenue bonds for sewer improvements, JWWTP.
All right, thank you. That's me.
All right, thank you, that's me.
That's you, all right, go ahead.
We do have Kevin Paquette here too from the water plant. If you have technical questions, I certainly can't answer those. But this is a request for the commission to authorize issuing bonds for joint wastewater treatment plant improvements. Benton Harbor and Saint Joseph jointly own and operate the joint wastewater treatment plant. And the plant requires several costly infrastructure improvements that will be taking place in the near future. So they're looking at ways of funding that and trying to do that in the most economical way to have the least, least impact to rate pairs and to try and maintain stability in rates. So one of the options is to, to issue a series of revenue bonds that would be a public competitive or negotiated sale if they're not able to get grants or low interest loan from the state. So in order to do that, they have to issue bonding requirements or at least have the bonding available if they're not able to get the other funding sources. It's a two-step process and we've done this before. But the first step is a notice of intent to issue bonds. And that, that is the first step that's being requested tonight. The notice is published in the paper and it opens a forty-five day referendum period. So people, if there's opposition, electors can request a ballot referendum. If that doesn't happen within forty-five days, then the second step can move forward. And that would be to consider a bond proposal. That would come before the commission. There'd be other notice requirements for that as well. But the notice of intent is the first step in allowing that to happen. Currently, there's not a specific timeframe because they're still looking at their projects and funding options for that. Benton Harbor did approve the mere resolution that authorized the notice of intent to be issued. They did that in June. And this is Saint Joseph's, I guess, time to consider that as well. So if you have questions, there are some, there's a PowerPoint presentation that Kevin put together that lays out some of the spending, potential projects that the bonding would cover. The bond request is for up to twenty million dollars. And that, that's a cap. That doesn't mean it will go that high, but it allows some flexibility if construction costs increase unforeseen. You know, funding options. So it allows them a little bit of room to do that. And again, this is a revenue bond. So it's something that the plant rates would be paying for.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the commission?
Is there somebody to hear to speak to? There are some line items listed, but talk about need, where we're at in life cycle, all those things.
Yes, Kevin is here. Tim's also on the board and involved as well. If you'd like to come up to the podium.
Sure.
I can't.
Need a minute, though.
Kevin Paquette, plant manager of the joint wastewater treatment plant down over on the island over there by Pier thirty-three. Do you have, so while you're pulling that up, I don't know if you have specific questions that you want that are outside of what I've got on the PowerPoint. So I can go through the PowerPoint and maybe answer all the questions at one time, if you can pull it up.
I think if you just give an overview or recap of where we're at in the life cycle of the equipment, what problems we may have been, have been having, is this more of an asset management plan looking forward and saying it's time to replace it? Or do we have failures? Just to have, just to have a better understanding of that.
Yep. So currently, what we've got on this, in scope right now, we've got sewer rehabilitation. So if you go to the, I think it's, so the sewer rehabilitation, that would include the sewer line from Saint Joe to the joint wastewater plant and from the Benton Harbor side of the river to the wastewater treatment plant. Both of those lines are the original lines from the plant from back in nineteen fifties. So it's, I'm gonna say they're aged, right? They, they need to be replaced at some point in time. The replacement of the channel air system, so currently, right now, down through the main portion of the plant, we have sewage that leaks on top of our employees whenever we get a heavy rain event because it's the original channel from the nineteen fifties. We've got final settling tanks, three, four, and five. All three of those were scheduled to be replaced ten years ago. They haven't been replaced yet. They have not failed. If one fails, we will not violate our permit. If two fail, we will violate our permit with the state. As far as the RES pumps, the return activated sludges are kind of tied to the final settling tanks. So what makes sense is your final settling tanks, the sludge settles, right? Final settling. Those are the pumps that pulls the sludge off the bottom of the tanks. So if we don't replace the pumps, we can settle the sludge, but then we can't pull it out. So we complete that work at the same time. And then we've got primary sludge valves that are scheduled to be replaced. Again, that, that's a smaller dollar amount. But the concept was is the plant has not taken out a bond since it was originally built. So if we were going to be taking out a bond, we're potentially trying to scope as many of our large-scale projects together. And that's why we have a higher price tag than what we would normally do. In the past, we've always cash flowed everything. So in that aspect, right now, if you go to the next slide, I think it'll show you a map. So this is the wastewater treatment plant. And if you show the next slide, it'll show some red lines. So again, the lines that are going horizontal left to right, that's the sewer lines from the two cities. Then that big red line in the middle next to three, four, and five, when we have a high water event, that entire channel sewage will potentially leak on top of our guys from the ceiling. Final settling tanks, three, four, and five are the ones we were talking about replacing. There's three tiny little dots just up there, you can see it. That's where the primary valves are. So again, from this perspective, it, it touches a very significant portion of our plant. And at this time, we have no plan of when we're going to be moving forward with it, but we do need to move forward with it. So some other projects that we have currently going on right now will potentially deplete the majority of our funds balance, if you have it. And to move forward with all of these, if we were gonna do them all in a time, at the same time, we would have to take out a bond. If we go a different manner, then we would not. So again, right now, we're just giving a notice saying that we intend to be able to potentially pursue that as an option. Does that answer?
Yeah, one other quick question. On the, on the main sewer lines, I don't know that much about this other than I've learned a lot from Tim over the years. We've talked a lot about sleeving stuff like that, that, that leaks. Is that something that can be sleeved versus a replacement?
That's what, that's what this would entail.
That's just sleeving. It's not a total replacement.
No, so one, one of the options from the Saint Joe side, because right now, there's no alternative. So we would have to shut that line down and we'd have to bypass pump. One of the options that we've talked to the state about is to do a directional bore similar to what Benton Charter Township just did and use it as a temporary line while we line it. So we wouldn't have to do bypass pumping. Potentially, it's the same cost, but then we could leave it in place as an auxiliary line, if you will. The Benton Charter Township line, now that that has come through, potentially, we could divert the Benton Harbor line through that in the period of time that we would be going through and, you know, maintaining the Benton Harbor line. And then it would go back, so we could use it as a bypass. So that's what kind of sparked our concept on that.
Thank you.
So these are the original lines from first constructed in nineteen fifty. So this is a pile of things that they all just need to go and be changed.
I mean, they don't need, they're still functional.
They're functional, but.
But if they have a bad day, we have a bad day.
Yeah.
How about that?
Other questions?
Kevin, just for clarification, the last item that you had listed on the project scope with the primary sludge valve replacement and miscellaneous upgrades, it has two hundred and seventeen dollars on that. Is that two hundred and seventeen thousand?
That's two hundred and seventeen thousand. Sorry, apologize. I'm, yeah.
Like a bargain.
Yeah, that's a great bargain. And again, we have, as you mentioned, we have put in for the Clean Water State Revolving Funds for the last two years on this. So this is not brand new. It's just, we're getting to a point where potentially, we're gonna have to look at a bond.
Sure.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I move to adopt the resolution authorizing notice of intent to issue sewage revenue bonds and to publish the notice of intent to issue joint sewer revenue bonds as presented.
I support. Any public comment on the matter? All right, Abby called the roll. Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, item number fifteen, twenty twenty-six Ford Explorer hybrids.
In the twenty-five, twenty-six capital improvement fund, hundred and twenty-five thousand was allocated for the purchase of two twenty-twenty-six Ford Explorer hybrid vehicles. Staff received state of Michigan my deal contract pricing for the two Ford Explorer hybrids. Squad came in at fifty-five thousand, thirty-seven dollars, and detective vehicle at fifty-six thousand, five ninety-two for a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The squad car being replaced, car ten will remain a six card, six squad car. And we'll eventually outfit that car and put it into our fleet. The other vehicle, detective vehicle, will be sold at auction. Car is almost a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. Staff recommends changing the color of the car, which is on the screen in front of you, from the white, which has been a history of our department for many, many years, to a metallic gray color. And you'll see five separate designs of the cars. I'm asking you today just to approve the color of metallic gray. And then staff will look at designs and outbreak them in front of you at a later date.
Great, thank you. Questions from the commission?
Nope.
Nothing? Looks good.
No questions, but same logic applies. I mean, can staff and city manager decide on the color of the cars? Or does the commission have to decide on the color of the cars too?
You could approve number five.
Steve is never shy with his opinions. I think these are all great questions that we can talk about. We're here anyway, so it's not adding a ton of work. But yes, I mean, if you want to add into your motion that we can, you're good with metallic and we can just take it from here, we're happy to do that, too.
I think it's in the motion, isn't it anyways?
Well, we were, Steve was saying he'd come back for which of the five. But Michael, if you're saying you don't want us to, we can choose one of these five. That's your call.
There's a type on that motion, too. I put twenty twenty-seven Ford.
Twenty seventeen, okay, thank you.
All right.
Are you moving this one?
I move to approve the purchase of two twenty-twenty-six Ford Explorer hybrid vehicles at the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to be, to be paid from, from the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six capital improvement budget. Authorize the sale of the twenty-seventeen Ford Explorer to be sold through Bitter G and approve the new color of metallic gray. The final design does not need to be approved by the city commission.
Support. Okay, public comment on the matter?
Bowman, three sixty Lake Street. I don't care about your cars, it's fine, you need cars. My question is, when do we go back to the county and ask for funding that this fellow and this crew I watch outside my window all summer work so diligently hard to keep the county traffic flowing into the beach? We, I understand, four million dollars of our tax dollars goes to the county. I don't know what we get for that. I understand it's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for resources for the summer to, for this project. The sheriff said to me, I watch these fellows fly into that beach when there's a problem, whether it's somebody who's gotten hurt or whether there's an issue. And these guys are down there with their cars. But I don't understand why we are not getting some sort of funding back from our county for the work that these guys do. And I am telling you, they are down there with their bulletproof jackets on in ninety-degree weather, helping sort this traffic out that the county has made a step with the other additional half a lane. But they could make better efforts because it is, cars are going this way. We still haven't got that issue resolved yet. And so I really, I, I don't understand why we are not getting something from the county for all of their efforts. And what do we do, what do they do with those four million dollars that our taxpayer dollars go to them? I'd really like to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you. June, thank you, first of all, for your appreciation of this incredibly dedicated team who have been wonderful this summer. I just want to clarify one point, which is those are not our four million dollars. That is tax money, county tax money, that is collected by the city as we collect a lot of things and then disperse it to the right places. It's not our money. That said, I am, I appreciate the suggestion. I'm happy to talk to the county about some cost sharing for the expenses that public safety racks up over the summer.
Yeah, yeah. Any other public comment on this? Okay.
My name's Jim Salami, six twenty-one Lyons Park Drive. Seeing that you put a freeze on the parking meters, why didn't you let the county use them to collect? And that would alleviate maybe the backup over there. Let them use them. You're not gonna use them right now. Install them, do away with the person collecting the money, let them collect the money.
We tried that. We tried that.
Thank you.
You tried it?
We tried that.
Okay. Thanks.
Other public comment? On the cars? All right, Abby called the roll. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
All righty, item number sixteen, Whirlpool Centennial Park Trees.
Yeah, so can you pull up that picture, Emily?
Yes, I just stopped. Yeah, give me one second.
Think it's one oh one. I'll start talking while she's pulling up the picture. So back before the new bathrooms and the new pump house was built for the, for the pump equipment that, that powers the fountain down below, there were some trees planted to hide what was a much smaller building at one time. Those trees, I think, were probably an incorrect choice. They're an evergreen-type tree, one of the fastest-growing trees that there is, two to three feet per year. And as they get taller, they get wider. There are three in particular, but there's actually five that wrap around the backside of that building that have now grown well into the sightline of the lake. The lake is the best resource we have here in Saint Joe. Pine trees are beautiful, but I'm sure people aren't coming here to look at those. You can see those in a lot of places. So I think it would be appropriate to have these trees removed and replaced with something much smaller, ornamentals that maybe don't get more than fifteen or twenty feet tall. I just think that these were the wrong trees planted in the wrong place. And this is an opportunity to fix them before they rob more of our view.
Okay. Questions from the commission?
This is something, I mean, we've got a Parks Board that looks at all of this every time we have Parks things. So is this something that we can, you know, have them review, especially, you know, it doesn't sound like there's any, you know, this very well could be the right decision, but maybe have them scope it out so that along with identifying, hey, there's a, you know, some trees we want to replace, have a plan to replace them, whatever it looks like. But I just think, I mean, we've identified a problem and that's great. Maybe this is, let's have the Parks Board take a look at this as they do with other similar things and bring us a recommendation, you know, after that on what to do with it now that we've identified the problem.
I hate just chopping down trees willy-nilly. I'd love to have an expert opinion, whether it's from Sustainability Committee or Parks Board or maybe both and having them come back and give us an analysis of what's going on with the trees and what trees would be better to replace it with. Maybe there's one that's not gonna grow as high, so.
Yeah, that was gonna be part of my motion. I'd actually like to make a motion to have those trees removed and have the Parks Commission replace the trees with a smaller tree that is proper for that site and doesn't exceed twenty to twenty-five feet in height.
And is there, I heard somebody speak up earlier about, there's a lot of trees that are not kept up or they're junk trees or they're, I don't know, is it, is it worthwhile taking a look at everything down there?
Absolutely, there are a lot of trees on the bluff as you get farther south at Lake Bluff Park that completely obscure the view and they're not, they're not substantial trees, they're just scrub trees. So anyways, that was the motion I made.
Maybe it is worth taking a look at it, there's a broader thing instead of just this one, two, three trees and.
I think in addition, I'd like to do it in addition. So I'd like to leave my motion in stans.
I'm not ready to jump and remove the trees before we have a look and know what we're gonna do about them, so I don't, yeah.
I'm asking for the tree removal and then the Parks Commission to select the proper replacement. So the question is, do we believe that they should be removed? And if the- And if that, that's the question for this, for this particular meeting and this motion.
Right. I think your suggestion, Michael, maybe was have the, these boards weigh in first and then we make a decision, so.
And also, I mean, that's certainly an opinion, and I'm not saying it's a wrong opinion that, you know, the trees are too big, but I'm sure I could. There would be plenty of voices in this room that would make the exact opposite case, right? It's, this is something that, you know, let's have the Parks Commission that is tasked with taking care of our parks and making sure that we have them, you know, that they are the way that we want them. Have them evaluate the question of, are these a problem, something that we want to have removed? And just evaluate the whole thing, but I, I would not feel comfortable with just, I'm not entirely convinced that they need to be removed. First of all, I'm open to it if that's what we need to do, but I'm not willing to just chop them down and then decide what we should do after. I'd rather, A, feel very comfortable that we need to chop them down, and then what are we going to do to replace them before I chop them down?
Right. Were you going to say something, Michelle?
But, you know, I'd be comfortable if we directed the Parks Board to, you know, evaluate this at their next meeting and bring us a recommendation.
I was going to say, when do they meet? Because then things, it seems like things take forever to.
Greg, when do they, when does the Parks Board meet?
They just cranked out a nice paddler park plan and, you know, they're, they're a very active board. I'm not at all concerned about this never, never coming before us again.
The second Thursday of what? When is it? So the next one's not until? Thursday of the month, second Thursday of August.
Is there any urgency to cut down the trees before the next commission meeting anyways, so?
Can't imagine.
Yeah.
It's, it's just continuing to block the view.
Yeah.
So.
So we have, we have a motion. Do we have a second for the motion? Okay. Not hearing one motion?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm really mixed on it because I don't like to just tap down trees, but I hate to wait forever to make a decision about something. And we've talked about the fact that we're blocking our, our asset, our greatest asset, but I guess I'm comfortable waiting to have the Parks Board take a look at it.
Motion fails?
Maybe they could do a, an emergency meeting.
I just don't see the real urgency that we have to do something in the next week to cut a tree down if we just want more information. I think it's fair to table it. Do we need a motion to table if that's the, an option that we want to look at?
Or we want to direct the Parks Board to?
Yeah.
Right. I mean, you could, you could direct the Parks Board to look at it, report back.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to that nature?
Do we need one?
Or just a recommendation to staff to direct?
Yeah, there's a consensus on that.
Okay, I would, I would be in favor of that. Others?
Yeah, absolutely. I would support that.
Okay. We have consensus to direct the board to look at that, then.
The Parks Board specifically. You had mentioned sustainability. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Parks Board, I think is the most appropriate.
Great. Yep, we will. Okay. Anything else you need on the direction? Nothing? Okay. Public comment?
There's another. Carl Meyer. Another alternative. You don't have to cut them down. You can pick them up, relocate, and plant them in another place.
Could do that.
And that's just a suggestion.
Thank you. Yeah.
It's cheaper.
Others?
Very good.
Did you display this picture?
Oh, no, no. Did you email it to me?
I emailed.
Oh, yeah, I think that is.
Yeah.
Give me one second. I'll look for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's your, what's your email address?
Yeah, T I J.
Tim Johnson, St. Forest Avenue. It's requested the city commission review and consider removal of three evergreen trees at the Whirlpool Centennial Park. It stated that the three trees have grown to a height that blocks the view of the beach in many locations. The city's zoning ordinance has a Lake Bluff Scenic View Protection Overlay District that protects the public sightlines from Lake Bluff Park toward the Lake Michigan shoreline. But removing these trees will not improve the view of the lake from the bluff. Removing these trees near the new pump house won't even make a difference to the view of the lake from Silver Beach Pizza, which is the area that the picture that was in the package showed. Because there are other trees between those pine trees and the lake. For instance, the trees on the east side of Silver Beach Parking Lot. Please understand I am against cutting any trees on the bluff, but there are multiple trees on the bluff running from Park Street to where Vine Street meets Water Street that actually block the view of the lake from the bluff. If you want to make viewing the lake easier, remove the forest that's on the bluff. I'm being facetious to make a point. I have a picture there from, well, you know where it's from, Blake, Broad Street at the, at the stairs. It's nice to see the lake from the bluff, but we don't need to make that view void of all trees because we want a better view of the lake. You certainly wouldn't advocate removing the forest on the bluff between Park Street and the Sess Quintanilla Monument for a better view of the lake. You wouldn't remove the trees between Market Street on the far left and the fountain for a better view of, from the Broad Street stairs, or the trees on the Lake Street, or the trees on Lake Street near, near Silver Beach, all the way over to the parking lot, to the trees that are behind the carousel. So the city has a tree trimming and removal policy approved in 2001 that is intended to prevent removal of healthy trees without appropriate rationale. All the, all three trees are considered healthy, and as such, the city commission is required to determine whether the block, the blocked view is sufficient rationale for the removal of these trees. I hope I've shown that there is no blocked view and therefore no rationale for removing the trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
A little different angle.
Debbie Johnson, 1919 Forest. I disagree with removing the trees. I'd be curious to know how many complaints there have been about a blocked view. I've been down there all the time and I don't see that there's a blocked view. And like, if the trees were removed, there's still other trees right by the beach. And the main view is up by the bluff. And I don't want to see our city resources spent on removing trees and trying to decide what new trees to plant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Alexandra Chusov, Langley Avenue. I have to say, bringing this trees in front of the commission seems to me like when my boss tells me he wants to integrate Stripe with our website, fantastic. He doesn't know if it integrates and he doesn't know if it works with our ERP. P.S. It doesn't work with either of those two things. We have a Parks Department, and I'm sure they have arborists and naturalists and specialists in the park. I'm sure they have access to the Department of Natural Resources, the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, who are awesome folks. They came out and they surveyed my space to make sure I didn't have anything invasive. I'm sure they're able to make appropriate decisions on whether we remove, replace, cut down what we put in, whether it's something native or something helps stabilize the bluff. I'm sure they're better placed to make that, that decision than this commission. And I'm not denigrating any of your knowledge, but as far as I can tell from any of your bios, you're not arborists and you're not Parks people. So I think the idea that this goes on to another place where this can be a decision made at that space and then comes back seems to be correct.
Thank you. Other public comment? All right. I think we have direction to staff. Um, we can move along. Last item on the agenda, Commission Chambers AV enhancements.
That's me again. So I am looking for the commission's blessing to move forward with a contract with Moss Telecommunications. We have funded in this year's budget up to $20,000 for some additional enhancements to our audio visual, which we implemented a couple of years ago. Since that time, the commission has passed a new requirement that the city commission meetings, the DDA meetings, the planning commission meetings, and I think the ZBA all be recorded and then posted online. So a couple of the enhancements are tied to that. We need more microphones for most of those meetings that aren't the commission meetings. These two tables get pushed together. Sometimes we use that one as well. And we need everyone to have microphones. Some, some additional microphones would be great. We would also, Tim is so good at changing our batteries mid-meeting. He does it very smoothly and low stress, but we would actually like to get something that would allow us to just charge the microphones and not constantly be dealing with batteries mid-meeting. Typically, staff, when it's not a commission meeting, also sits where Tim and Ben are seated. So we're looking for another one of these devices to go over there. And we also would like to update this one with something that integrates a little bit more smoothly with Zoom. So in total, the quote is $17,421, comes in under budget, which is nice. And we'd like your approval to move forward.
Thank you. Questions?
Gotten a lot of, you know, good feedback, you know, since we implemented the change. I think it's, it was a move in the right direction to, you know, bring more people the opportunity to see exactly what gets deliberated in this room because it's, it's hard to be able to make it to something unless it's your job to. So I digress, but this was, this helps us make that even better. Hopefully gives to, you know, give us more expansion opportunities for these types of things and all. Just give us more, more good ways to do things and interact with our constituents. So this is good. I would, I would move to accept the quote provided by Moss Telecommunications of $17,421.29 to update the AV.
I support. Public comment on the matter? All right, Abby, call the roll. Commissioner Sorolla?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Binkley?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that. That concludes our agenda. We will now move to city comments. City manager, you get to start.
I don't have too much. I want to thank staff for all of their work this weekend with the Crassel Art Fair. It is not a small feat on the staff side, of course. Huge kudos to Crassel, who does the heavy lifting, but our staff works really hard to make it happen, and it's one of my favorite weekends of the year. So thank you for that. I also just want to say how much I'm really enjoying the continued engagement. Our audience has increased significantly over the last few months and at the beginning, downtown parking program, folks came in, shared their opinion and left. And I think now we have a lot of folks who come in and stay, and I just really appreciate all of the engagement. So that's all I have.
Thank you. We're on two. Commission comments. We don't have any more public comment sections today. Sorry. No, we did that at the beginning and then at each agenda item, so sorry.
Come back.
No, come back next time.
I've come back many times.
Great.
I know you do.
All right. That moves us along to city commission comments. Any comments from the commission?
I just wanted to say that if you haven't been to the new Kaleidoscope Park at Kiwanis, it's fabulous. Take your kids, grandkids there. And kudos to Public Works, especially Jeff and the team. They got it ready. They were there all day. It was packed with happy kids and adults.
All right. Any others? All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and that concludes our meeting at 7:44 PM.